That was the only question I had.
So, the question I have is really more for staff than for Shane. It's been mentioned, Alderman and Waters mentioned that there's a lot of traffic on that road. Talk about the improvements to the road and what's going to happen there. And then my bigger question for Shane is on Black Friday, lots of cars, people coming in and out of there. Is there plenty of stacking and if you have to do a fire run out of that fire station, can you handle it? And I'd like to have the opportunity to follow that up, but talk about what's the improvements to Fourth Street Road, please.
Okay. I probably would direct that to Sarah Locke, our Public Works Director, in regards to the proposed improvements to the transportation system.
Sure. So, the currently proposed improvements, they are proposing widening from approximately the right-in, right-out shown on the east-west Fourth Street to the New Shackle Island intersection. They will, they're proposing a traffic signal at their full access point. They will be adding turn lanes at the intersection with New Shackle, both on Fourth Street as well as an additional right-turn lane in on New Shackle Island.
Do you feel comfortable, she's talking, they're gonna have 800 parking spaces, so you could have eight, eight, eight hundred cars coming in and out there at a given time. There's plenty of room for stacking as you're trying to make those turns, especially during heavy teatow.
Sure. So, this is an FDP. This isn't a site plan, so it's not completely defined, but we have submitted the traffic impact study to third-party review for, with our on-call traffic engineer to receive any, any possible feedback that they may have at this, at this point.
And then I guess I'm interested in hearing what the Fire Department says about the ability to get fire trucks and ambulances in and out of that, especially during peak traffic times.
And I'll let Shane answer that. One of the things you can note there, kind of right there, that box with the X in it, that's actually right, right at the fire station entry. And I believe that's an area that is gonna have signage on the ground to where that it can't be blocked. So, if stacking is occurring, that's an area where cars shouldn't, shouldn't be stopping.
My name's Shane Owen with the Hendersonville Fire Department. I'm deputy fire marshal. If you don't mind when we're dealing with something like this, I'd like to bring Chief Bishop on this when we're dealing with traffic and moving and all that, if that's okay.
So, good evening. Thank you. But working with Shane and them, obviously, we have no concerns with traffic. All of our sirens, our communicators are on red lights, coming into the red lights, coming away from red lights, they're activated. So, as we're approaching, everything will stop, and we're coming out or going to, they will turn green for us to allow traffic to stop on both sides and us to travel through. Your concern with having 800 people coming in and out, we provide our turning template, as you know, as part of this, and so we will have enough access on any entrance way or exit way for us to still gain access to the building if there was to be an event at that facility. We were pretty confident we'll be able to get in and get out with no, with no problems whatsoever.
My biggest concern's not their building. I mean, metal building, not a whole lot in there, not really concerned about fire. My bigger concern, there's 15 or 20 cars stacked up on Fourth Street trying to turn onto New Shackle, and you guys need to come out of the fire station to get to New Shackle. How are you gonna get around all those cars?
So, again, as we come out, the, the turning radius will be wide enough for us to come out of our apron to approach New Shackle Island, as you're saying, to provide coverage somewhere else. Our sirens will activate the red lights. It'll pop green for us and turn red on both sides, so we'll have the right of way by law to come out of there. It should not affect us adversely at all whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Ms. Oakwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a very exciting project, I think, as everybody has reiterated time and again. I know I'm very excited about it. I know lots of people are excited about it as well. This is a question really more for, I guess, Keith or, or someone on the staff. Could you just talk us through the added uses? That was a little bit cloudy in our packet, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
I sure can. Thank you, Commissioner. On looking at Phase One, and Phase One is the area that Costco's looking at, if you'll look on that third page of the, it's the third page, it looks like this, that area right there. So, on that third page, we'll look at existing allowable uses. So, that old PDP that you saw was that scratchy-looking image up there earlier, yeah, that one. So, that one had all of these different uses for that back part. It was called Area D at the time, and the front part was called Area E. And all of those different uses were uses that were allowed on there. For example, where Costco is, is proposing to go, the, some of the things that were allowed there, administrative services, personal and group care facilities, religious facilities, financial consulting services, food and beverage service sit-down, general business and communication services, general business, personal services, professional services, medical and non-medical, auto home supply stores, motels, hotels, motorcycle dealers, and new car dealers. And so, all of those uses are what was allowed under this old, this old plan, preliminary development plan, and under the new final development plan, it just basically would be Costco. It'd be general retail with those acknowledged accessory uses of wholesale and of the canopy for the fuel, fuel cells. And then on that front part, that's Phase Two, which was referred to as Area E on the old, old plan, it had a lot more uses. It had basically a lot of the same kind of uses, except allowed for some more food, beverage service uses, and, and also, also about the same, the same uses that were allowed on that, on the other one. Let's see if there's one. But it also allowed general retail trade, which this back part did not allow. So, one of the things that we did, this is old, and it's under the old ordinance that doesn't exist anymore, but because that plan development was approved years ago, whatever was intact at that time, they have the right to that. But in order to kind of clean this up and, and bring it all to a final development plan, then we proposed these uses for the front part of this, the Phase Two part, where the hospital's gonna retain the property as potential uses. I think as the representative from Costco said, the hospital doesn't have a specific plan at this time. I think it certainly, you know, medical office is something that I believe would probably be something that they would want to do, but a lot of these other things existed, but we didn't have specific uses that correlated to uses today. So, this is really a best, best fit. The only thing that's just a little bit different would be I added restaurant quick service to allow a limit of one, kind of a drive-through restaurant at that, on that location. That wasn't there previously. But that's, that's where all of those, all of those uses came from. They weren't even necessarily specifically the ones the hospital was, was looking for, but they didn't have a particular, a particular, specific list of uses. So, I was just trying to get the best fit from what, what the uses are right now, because the only alternative would have been to do a final development plan on Costco and then just leave this front part in the old, old preliminary development plan under the old ordinance, which I think would have been confusing as it developed in the future. Does that count? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Free. I mean, just sort of a follow-up question, specifically on Phase Two, when I'm looking at the uses for the Hendersonville Hospital side. You know, all of those uses look like they would fit within this new development with, you know, sort of a glaring exception of the motor vehicle dealership. I'm just not sure, you know, when I think about this overall FDP, having a motor vehicle dealership at that front end on New Shackle Island on that side of it would, would be appropriate. That's just my thought.
And, and that was something that the hospital didn't necessarily ask for. It's an existing use. It's allowed, allowed now, but if, if we can remove that, would that, would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, so maybe if we can remove that particular use, then, then that would take that out of the list of uses. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to address the takeout limit two, Keith.
Yes.
So, for, that would be like a Wendy's or some kind of a drive-through?
Yeah, it could be. It could be just any kind of drive-through restaurant. But again, that, that wasn't that restaurant quick service limit one. That was one I just suggested in there in this transition. That wasn't something they were specifically asking for. It's just looking at the site and with all the uses that we are allowing, I just knew that's probably gonna, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some restaurant that's gonna have a drive-through.
But, but you're saying limit one, but this says limit two.
Yeah, that, that previous one was limiting two to takeout. So, that was food, beverage, service, takeout. That's like you just come to the window and you just take out. You don't, you don't really drive through. You might drive through to the takeout window, but it's not like ordering in line like a McDonald's. A takeout really is, is more like a dairy bar that you, an old dairy bar, or it could be actually McAllister's. That's kind of a modern takeout. I don't know if you've ever been to McAllister's thinking you're gonna order something in line, but that's just for pickup. And so, that, that's kind of what that, what that is. But the, the things that have really changed on, on restaurants' quick service, where you have a drive-through, since COVID, you know, a lot of, a lot of restaurants that really didn't have pickup or drive-through, you know, are now really needing that as a part of their, part of their business. So, it's kind of changed with, with how that is.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. But again, this is a larger, you've got a larger building facade. So it would be, it'd be reasonable that it would be very difficult to meet that full, full requirement. And you can pull up that first, that image of the front of the building elevation. And they've got, there isn't a whole lot of glazing on that front. But right there where you walk in and everything, you've got some within, within that area. But on the other parts of the building, you don't, you don't have that. They did, Costco in working with us on the exterior of that front and the side that you see there, they did do quite a few things that they do differently in other areas, where they did give more interest in the exterior by moving the, the exterior in and out and doing some variety of materials that have a little bit more depth to them on those, those areas. The next waiver is waiver number two. This is allow material other than brick or stone to be primarily exterior facade for the north and west elevations. And then allowing the use of metal siding for the primary exterior facade for the north and west elevations. What this is, is generally, we have a requirement that you have the primary exterior material, building material is brick or stone. And typically, and it's not by a percentage. Typically, the way the staff looks at it is if it doesn't have a lot of interest, the building's pretty simple, pretty plain, then we're certainly wanting to see more than 50% brick or stone. If the building has a little bit more creativity, then maybe something a little bit under, under 50%, we would probably consider that still to be primary. In this case, you can see with the, the north elevation is 1.7% quick brick. The west elevation, and that, that north elevation is facing 386, and the west elevation is 11.2% quick brick. The front, the front elevation and the east side, they do, they do meet the expectation on that, on that brick percentage. But those other two sides, yeah, right there, you can see on the majority of that, they're, they're using metal. They've got two different kinds of metal. I think they've got metal and insulated metal. One's metal and one's metal with the kind of a spray on it. It's got a little bit of a different texture. We did, the Costco did agree in between when you got your reports and just in the last couple of days, they agreed to all staff comments. And one of those comments were, I just wasn't really crazy about the orangish-looking metal on that back. And they're going to work with us to get something darker within that area. I think if it was darker, you know, there are trees there on the 386, and there are some other trees that are going to be conserved on Forest Retreat, facing the church. And if it was a darker look, it would kind of blend in a little bit better instead of, instead of sticking out. The fourth, no, the third waiver is to allow for a reduction of five-foot foundation landscaping for the east and west facade of the building in the areas that are highlighted in yellow. That area to the right, I think that's the automotive, automotive area. So there's bays and things there that have glass panel doors that go up and down. And then it really doesn't work out too well within that area to the east, that's right here to the right of the screen, for, to have that five-foot landscaping all the way up and down through there. It would just be little bits of it. So what they've done there is if you'll look to the right on the parking, they've made those landscape islands that are on the end caps, made those deeper. So we'll have more landscaping, more intense landscaping area there. On the other side, that's the west side facing the church, you can see some of the tree conservation easements and things. There's some trees and some additional supplemental vegetation that's going to be added there that, instead of putting that up against the building. You know, it's something where, and they, they're meeting, I believe, on the, on the front, they're meeting, meeting our requirements. But it is difficult for a very large building like this to landscape all the way around those, those, the front and the sides of, of those buildings. So that is a, it is a challenge. Also, the fourth waiver, this is a waiver of overhead doors along the southern and western facades of the building. That, to the left, that's what's facing the church. It's a little overhead door there. And the one to the right, where you have the four doors, that's their loading area. And then that's facing the hospital. So that's facing Forest Retreat toward, toward the hospital. That area on the plan, it is inset from the building. So it's set, if the front of the building's here, it's set back pretty good from that front. And they're doing some more intense vegetation along Forest Retreat to kind of, kind of counter that. And that's, that's the final, the final waiver. And I can, I can answer any more detailed question the commissioners had about that. The, the developer's representative is here as, as well, if, if they could answer anything on that.
Keith, just one question.
Yes.
Your comment about the four doors, will you show me that, please?
Yes.
Is it?
Yeah, let's pull, let's pull that. That's a good one. So if you see that top one up there, that's what's facing the hospital, Forest Retreat. That's what's facing the fire station area. And if you look on the very end down there, those four doors, that's, that's where those four doors are.
Okay, can we go back one slide?
Yes.
Please. Is that that recessed area there in the lower left-hand corner of the building itself?
It looks like a lattice work, yeah.
Okay.
That's within that loading, loading area.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? I have a question for developer. And Commissioner Peterson touched on parking a little bit. I just want to kind of go back to it. Your proposed building is 156,308 square feet. How does that compare to the other Costco facilities? And take the one in Murphy's Row, for instance. I'm familiar with that one. How does that compare in size to that?
Same size.
Exact same size?
Yep, exactly.
As far as parking spots, do we have the same number of parking spots?
Yeah, maybe there's a difference of maybe 25 stalls, but it's, it's quite close.
Do you know?
I think this one probably has a couple more.
It has more, okay.
Yeah, this one has more, yeah.
Okay.
750, yeah, it was in Murphy's Row, okay. So 50, 50 stall difference.
Okay, so you've got 750 in Murphy's Row for the same size building. Have you noticed any parking issues down there at Murphy's Row facility?
No, and, well, it opened in April, so usually Christmas time is the time that we look at that. And we do look at off-site options. If it, if it does become busy, we'll take our employees somewhere else, you know, temporarily find a, find a spot. But that's usually about 100 stalls. But this seems to be the sweet spot to make sure that people aren't going up and down aisles, searching too hard. Make sure there is some surplus parking on site still.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, I had one more. You said the Murphy's Row store opened in April?
I think so, right? Gosh, we were just there. COVID fog. It wasn't too long ago, yes.
Do you know how their sales are doing?
They're doing, they're doing well. I can't give you exact numbers, but they're doing well.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing any more questions or comments. I will entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments and the removal of the
Car wash.
Yeah, the new car dealership from
And the car wash.
And the car wash. Thank you.
So moved.
We have, who was the second? I'm sorry. Commissioner Evans is the second. We have a motion by Commissioner Silkwood, a second by Commissioner Evans. We'll go to roll call vote. Lauren, would you please call the roll?
Altizer?
Aye.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Aye.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood? Slattery?
Aye.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, there's probably a lot of interest in this. The next steps are, this will go to the General Committee, next to, the BOMA General Committee next Tuesday. That same evening, it'll go to full BOMA. And it'll just, it'll be before BOMA on one reading. And then after that, then Costco could move forward with the site plan. And at that site plan stage, that's when we're going to get into a lot of the deep, deep site level details. Thank you.
Going to move on, on the agenda now. We've got three site plans up for review tonight. The first one is for the highlight, and owner John Jaeger is the developer, the owner here as well. Going to let Timothy kind of start walking us through, and then we'll hear from the owner, the developer.
Okay. This, this site's located at 505 East Marine Street. It's across the street from Scottish Highlands subdivision that, that's to the north. Bluegrass Landing subdivision's to the east and Twin Bay subdivision to the south. This will be a restaurant and bar going into an existing 3,000-square-foot building. I should say that, yeah, this site's its own general commercial, so restaurant is a, allowed use by right in that zone. They're going to be adding some decking around the existing building. We'll be adding a stage and in the rear, three independent outdoor kitchens underneath a pavilion. So I think there's been some interest in the, how we look at the stage. The stage will be for outside entertainment for the customers of the restaurant. It's considered an accessory use. And the way staff looks at that is when we're determining if it, if it's necessary use or not, we, we ask, is it customarily incidental to and subordinate to the principal use? Live entertainment is customarily accessory to a restaurant use, whether it's indoor or outdoor. We also look to see if the acts, if the accessory use is, is really the predominant part of the business, or is it secondary to it? So we look at, is it, is it drawing traffic in and of itself? Is it, is it, are they doing ticketed events? Is there parking that's kind of squalling outside the boundaries of the site? All those things can be indicators of something that has gone from a secondary use to a primary use. And we can address that in, in the event that ever happens. We have talked to the, the owner about this, and they've assured us that this is for customers of the restaurant. It is not, not meant to draw in anything beyond that, those boundaries. The, they are providing the required 20-foot landscape buffers. There is, there's an existing common open space between this site and the Bluegrass Landing to the west. That open space is about 85 feet wide, kind of there. You can see Bluegrass Landing at the edge of, the right-hand edge of your screen. The, the open space is part of Bluegrass Landing. That's, that's an existing buffer. Plus, they're also providing the required 20 feet in addition to that. They have agreed to all staff comments, and they are not requesting any waivers.
Timothy?
Thank you. Commissioner Longmire?
Is, is this the old Stamps property?
I'm not familiar with that name.
Is it? Yes, the old Stamps.
Yeah.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think this is an exciting project as well. I do have a couple of questions, though, I guess for Timothy. Timothy, talk to us a little bit about this decking. Is this all on the first floor? Is there going to be multi-level decking? How, how does that all kind of?
The applicant can address that, the
Hi, Paul Jones. I'm from Powell Architects, an architect for this job. So the decking, do I do I need to give my address?
No. If you want to, you're welcome.
I'll keep it to myself. So the decking is a, it's a wood deck all around the, for the three sides of the house that you see there that is level with the first floor of the house. You do have to step up onto that deck to get into the house, but it's just a one-level deck around the front of the house.
Perfect. Just a follow-up question to that. It's not really shown in our packet, but can someone talk to us about where exactly the stage will be located? You know, when I was looking through some of the drawings that we received, not here in our packet tonight, but online, it kind of looked like the stage would be facing, the, the noise from the stage would be coming toward the residential area. Was any thought given to that? Perhaps moving the stage to the southwest corner, and that way the sound emanates and goes toward 31E? Just kind of talk through that rationale a little bit for me.
Sure. Do you, do you have the site plan in the packet?
Yeah, definitely. We have an image of that.
Okay, so the site plan, or the stage is, so the property on the left, there's a kind of a gathering of trees right by the entrance near the, the stone wall up there. And the stage is currently facing directly south, sort of towards the existing house. And so when you come out of the house, of the front of the house, there's a kind of open grass area. And so we were going to use that as kind of a, a gathering area so that people could stand or sit in front of the stage for entertainment purposes. So there's kind of a natural area to place a stage right there. And the idea was to face it back towards the house itself so that, one, people could stand out on the deck and still have visual access to the stage, but also that the, any sound would essentially be directed at the existing house and not to the surrounding areas.
Thank you for that. So it's going to be pointed more toward the existing house and not towards sort of the neighbors. On some, some of the, the site plan drawings and whatnot I saw, it looked like it was sort of angled out towards some of the neighbors and not toward the existing building. So I just wanted to
Yeah.
You know, I'm always concerned about noise and the neighbors, and you know, there's an ordinance for times the band has to stop and all of that. But still, you, you do become concerned. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the intent. And we can, you know, tilt the angle if there's some concerns. If it's not directly at the house, we can look at that further in the site plan to kind of rotate it a bit if that's a, if that's an issue.
Just for the benefit of the audience, what we're passing around up here is actually the layout where that stage is, so we know what we're looking at up here. Commissioner Longmire, I think, has a question.
Yeah, I would like to say I had a call on this from someone who was very concerned about the fact that the noise might be going into the neighborhood. So what, what is involved to take the stage and turn it, put the people where the noise is going out toward 31E as Ms. Silkwood had suggested? I mean, this is a residential neighborhood.
Sure. Yeah, we would have to, I guess, relook at the site plan and just try to determine a new spot for it. Right now, it kind of just fit nicely into that area. And we, one of the main issues, like I was saying, is for the ability to utilize that front deck and kind of walk out from the house and be able to access the stage visually. But we, you know, we're open to, to looking at other options that just kind of fit nicely there within the overall plan.
All in all, I mean, I think it's very nice, but I think we have to think about our neighborhoods. Those people have been there for a long time.
Sure.
It's a very quiet neighborhood. It's pretty much what I refer to as a dead-end neighborhood because you don't go anywhere when you go in there. You've got to come back out or, or cut over to the next dead-end neighborhood. So it's really pretty quiet.
Yeah.
And it's very disturbing when you have noises that are going on on a regular basis. If it was an occasional thing, it's different. So where I understand what you're saying about utilizing the space, I think it's more important to think about the people that have been there for a long time. That you have your, what you want, but trying not to interfere with their lives.
Yeah, we, we understand that, and we can definitely take that consideration more into account. I think there will be obviously specific hours that it would operate so that, so as not to bother the surrounding areas necessarily at, at late or early hours. But, do you want to? Yeah, sure.
Hi there. Couch entry with Civil Land Company. Just talking with Mr. Jaeger about the stage itself and the placement. If you looked at the site plan, we could take that and flip it 180 on the other side of that little seating area where it does point back out to 31, if that would make the commissioners more at ease. It would, it would serve the same purpose.
Are you talking about like that area in front of the parking?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, or even a little bit more out, wherever staff would feel like that would address the comments. The, the equipment that Mr. Jaeger is going to use there, the, the sound level falls off after about 150 feet anyway. We're trying to aim it towards the house, but we can flip it and go back towards 31, which it'll drown out anything. If that would make
I think anything that is done to try to preserve the neighborhood as it's been. And even though the noise may not exceed, I think our limit is 11 o'clock at night. And even though the noise may not exceed, I think our limit is 11 o'clock at night for noise.
Oh, sure.
But that's too late for most people.
And I think we were talking about shutting down well in advance of that.
And the other thing I'd like to say is that when you live in your neighborhood, you don't necessarily want to hear what it is that's going on where you are. People that are there love to hear it. But whether you're flipping a burger on your grill or you're sitting there talking to your friends, you don't really want something else to interfere with your life.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to try to go in order. I noticed them, I think Commissioner Silkwood was up next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keith, Mr. Free has graciously shared a, a more detailed site plan with me. And, you know, I, I, I can see it both ways. I see where you're, you're coming from. You're trying to direct the sound at the decking, which is surrounding that front portion of the house that faces 31E. You know, so I don't know, I'm just kind of speaking, but I, just off the cuff. But I don't know that we necessarily have to move it to that back corner. I think that would be ideal. But at the same time, I wouldn't want that to cause a problem and all the patrons not be able to hear the music if they're sitting outside.
Would you be okay if we worked with staff to rotate it?
That's what I was going to say. I would be happy, you know, would, I would agree to let them, staff work with the developer and, and try to figure something out that works for everybody. Because I do see where you're going with the decking and where the stage is, but at the same time, I agree with Ms. Longmire that we don't necessarily want it directed, you know, at the neighborhood and disrupting neighbors as they're trying to utilize their yards and space. So that was my comment.
Director Free.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think if we could work to do that, I, really, I think what it is about the stage is it, it's okay as an accessory use, a limited accessory use. But, you know, but probably even if, even if you're not intensifying the use to clearly move it to, um, uh, out of an accessory use to what the full, you know, to a higher level use. Uh, I think people being disturbed by the noise will then press, press us on looking at that closer and, and closer. So I think the better strategic location where it can absorb more without, you know, disturbing the greater neighborhood would, would be positive. But that at some point, if, if the staff determined that it crossed that line or that, you know, we're having like concerts every night and, you know, and, and that kind of thing versus a low level kind of a, you know, kind of a thing, uh, then we would have to look at that, that, that it's moving out of the accessory use.
Yeah, very, very agreeable with that, yes.
Commissioner Hasty.
Yes, I, uh, I live not very close to this, but, uh, in Stony Brook. And, uh, there occasionally where Bluegrass Country Club has outdoor events. And they have music. And I could hear it very well from where I'm at. If you've got a bandstand there and somebody playing a drums, it don't matter where you've got the front of that bandstand. The neighbors are going to hear it. Cause that sound just radiates. And you can't funnel it towards the house and keep it to where that residential neighborhood can't hear it. And if that adventure is really successful and you've got all that music, it'll be a real problem for the neighborhood, I think. That's a piece of commercial property that's kind of out of character with the neighborhood. And I really think there are other commercial uses for that property that would be much more amenable and consistent or not as disrupt, as interruptive to the neighborhoods. And that's not the only outdoor use. All your outdoor dining and whatnot, you're going to create, I think, what could be a disruption for the neighborhood. And for all that, I can't support the project. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Allsout.
Well, I want to mirror some of what the others have said. The complaints that I got from the neighbors too were all about the noise. And, and all of them are concerned about it, having to hear it, you know, nighttime. I know we have ordinances in place, but, uh, they don't, you know, not everybody goes to bed at 11 o'clock at night. A lot of them go much earlier. So with that being said, um, you know, I am concerned about the neighbors. Most of them were there long before this venue was coming forth. So those people have a right to be heard and, and, and I'm just, you know, speaking what I have heard. And I would also speak, if it was me living close to one of those houses, I would be like Mr. Hasty. It's a noise that's not normal and it's a different noise and you would hear it. You'd be very keen to it, so.
Commissioner Evans.
Well, I, I thought it was going to be the fly in the ointment, but thank God I'm not. I've served that purpose too often. But, uh, like Commissioner Hasty and a couple of others, uh, I would question the wisdom of ever having zoned that general commercial when it's almost 90% in circle to buy, uh, residential property. And I live over in an area off the Sanders Ferry Peninsula and I can hear the music over at Turtle Bay, uh, on the other side of the lake. So, uh, that is going to be a disruption for all of the neighbors in that area. I, I, I just don't think that's, I'm, I'm sure it was rezoned so that the old Stamps house could be used for a commercial purpose. I get that. But I don't think everybody, uh, anybody ever envisioned it being used, uh, as a, an open live music venue. So I can't support it for that reason.
Commissioner Slatter.
Hi, I just have a few questions about the restaurant. I think this is a, an intriguing with respect to the, the concerns about the noise and, and neighbor concerns. I'm intrigued about the restaurant concept, so a couple of questions about that. There's a restaurant within the house and then three separate leasable restaurant, container converted restaurants.
Yes, I'm going to let the owner, Mr. Jaeger, explain that. He's much better in, in that realm. Hey, guys, I'm John. So totally hear you and I respect you. We've, I'm going to get there too. But my wife and I, we live like a few blocks away. We've got our two little girls, so we're just, we want to do our due diligence to be good neighbors as it goes to the noise. And I would be very happy to answer because there's a lot of work that we have done with some landscaping plans. It's a very specific sound equipment that we're willing to pay a lot of money for that is not just a garage band that's setting up on a slab that's rocking out. So all that to say, uh, let me encourage you that we've thought diligently about this and we've been looking at this property for about two years and we just closed on it last weekend. So we're pretty excited. But all that to say, the restaurant thing, um, we, we got inspiration from a couple of other concepts around the country. The three stalls will be autonomous, uh, like chef-driven businesses. And so we've got a lot of interest and there's some people that we're kind of working our lease agreements out with. But yes, so they will, uh, our lease agreement with them is they will have a lunch and dinner commitment. And so we want this to be daily use. This is a family-friendly estate. We're calling it a culinary estate. We're going to have ice cream for kids inside the house. We'll have, it's a full coffee shop, so it'll open at 7:00 AM. We'll have pastries, but the stalls will be like our sustenance. Our stalls will be where we can go get like a burger or a taco or pizza for the purpose of then going in the house and getting some soda. Most of us have been down to 30A. Most of us have been to a place called The Hub. So that's kind of a familiar place for a lot of people here in Nashville or the area. But the idea is we want people to enjoy the grounds. So there's more of a sustenance food outside, but there's snacks and coffee and there's an active bar and some other things that are inside. We'll have like a little kind of play area for kids and so, yeah. That's the food plan.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I encourage you to consider a lot of acoustics nights. Just do acoustic nights during the week.
Trust me.
So back to the, the restaurant space, 109 parking spaces? Is, is what, oh, sorry, you're up back.
Yes.
109 parking spaces, so 200 patrons at a time. Is there seating? With 109 parking spaces, you could conceivably easily have 200 people on the property at the same time.
Seat count is, uh, like seat count's about 198 with indoor and outdoor. Yes. And you, you know how restaurants are.
Sure.
I mean, everywhere you go on Friday night, you never have enough parking. So John was willing to put in a little bit extra, I think, on this.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. Mr. Jaeger, I really like this project. I think it's very exciting and something that Hendersonville needs.
Thank you.
However, I, I've already received noise complaints.
Sure, sure.
And, and I'm not even in Ward Five. And, um, you had me until you mentioned the outdoor concert venue. And I just afraid that that doesn't fit with the neighborhood. And, uh, I, I was hoping you hadn't closed on the property yet because you talked about options and I thought this would be perfect at the Goat Farm.
Yeah.
Or at Bell Cove or something, but not on Main Street and Time Drive.
Yeah.
So for those reasons, I can't support this project, but I certainly wish you the best.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let me, and if I may, let me say something before, um, before you too much further. John and I, we discussed prior to this because we had heard that there were concerns about the stage in that part of the project. If, if the project is, is not something that the commission will support because of that component, we're willing to pull that component out of the project so that the restaurant, which is really what he's here to do, so that that can proceed. So if it's the will of the commission, uh, if you want to make a motion along those lines, that is not, um, a must-have to, to, for him to be successful on this site. If that, if that helps, it's, it sounds like maybe that'll help with a lot of the concerns, uh, that the commission's having. So leave that to your will.
So that was going to be one of my questions is, does the, does the music part have to be a piece of it? Or can the restaurant stand on its own?
Very, very much can stand on its own. Yes, it was just another fun thing to do there on the site. But it, we hear what you're saying and it makes sense to us and it's, uh, it's fine with us if that comes out.
I love the outdoor music, would love to go. Sounds like a fun place, would love to take my family there. And, and I'd love to see more outdoor music and places to do that, especially, um, there's plenty of places in Nashville. Would love to see some up here, but I also hear what the neighbors are saying. But if you guys are willing to, to pull that and can, it can stand without it, then maybe that's the way we go and everybody's happy.
Commissioner Hasty.
What's the restaurant seating capacity on the interior?
Yeah, there's, well, inside, inside is, uh, on the, interior level one is 92, I believe.
92?
92. Occupancy wise.
And the exterior?
The, the exterior deck, uh, occupancy wise is, uh, I want to say it was like around 120 some, 130 some, depending, you know.
That's the area that we're seeing here.
Oh, the outdoor kitchens, that's a, that's a whole nother, um, I can't remember right off the top of my head, but it, it was similar in that sort of potentially. We have shown, uh, 60 seats and that's how the parking was calculated in the, in the kitchen pavilion area.
The reused containers provide food just for this area? Are they going to be going back and forth inside and all?
The whole site, yeah.
It's a lot of outdoor activity for winter time.
Well, uh, there's also the interior of the house as well.
Now, the interior, it's a, it's a bar also.
It, it will have alcohol sales.
Alcohol sales, both in there. I don't know how you're going to get 92 seating inside that house, but I guess you can.
It's a square footage calculation. It's not necessarily how many, that's not how many seats we have inside, I guess.
How many seats you got inside?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I think it was 44. There's a difference between seats for bodies and, uh, fire marshal sort of occupancy, life safety calculation as far as, so.
Sounds like you've got an awful lot of parking for that number of people.
I would just clarify, there, there, there's two, there's two different kinds of occupancy. Planning, the setting ordinance looks at parking based on the square footage of the building. So it's one, one space for 100 square feet of the primary building with all the square footage of the three kitchens. Plus, they're required to, to provide one parking space per four outdoor seats in excess of 20. So you get 20 outdoor seats for free. Everything in excess of that, one per four seats. And that's how this required, uh, parking is calculated. And he's discussing occupancy. He was talking about codes has their occupancy calculations. It's, has nothing to do with parking. That's, that's completely separate. So that may have caused some confusion. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we have 195, uh, occupants, which generates the parking count. I think it's 195 seats or the, the outdoor that gen, is part of what generates the parking count. The required, yeah.
My comment and question is, I'm okay with having a little too much parking because we've got too many areas in town where we don't have enough parking. So if we've got a little extra somewhere, I'm quite okay with that.
I think we have 18, 18 extra spaces.
Okay.
I wanted to ask a little bit about, because I didn't see any pictures in here on this. Just tell me, tell me a little bit about the storage containers and how those are going to look and just what, how you came about using storage containers there as opposed to just erecting a small standalone building?
Sure.
Well, the storage container, I mean, it's not anything more fancy than it being like trendy. I mean, there is a whole like global trend. I mean, we can all get on Instagram or Google it right now, like storage container food parks. And there's one in like most major cities globally. So we are just trying to bring something a little newer, a little fresher to Hendersonville as opposed to just structures. So not fa, not a fancy answer, but you know, a little younger thinking.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments?
I will say just to clarify that about the containers, they, they were clad in, they're not just metal shipping containers, exposed metal, like you, it's not going to look like a shipping container because we're cladding them in wood siding.
Yeah, I'd like to ask again a little bit about the interior part of the house that you say 44 and 92, but go over those figures again.
I think there's about 44 seats at tables inside.
But you're expecting around 92 people, it would still be acceptable.
Yes, ma'am. The, the, I think fire, the code allows a 90, up to 92 occupants total. So that's also standing, you know, standing around, that kind of thing.
Yeah, like, like any bar.
Yes, ma'am.
So how large are these storage containers? 40 foot by what? Eight by 40?
Yes, ma'am. And, and part of what they're doing is they build the kitchen inside that and then just bring the kitchen and they...
So you've got like a galley kitchen inside?
Yes, ma'am. And then a, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so then there's a window or a serving area, people order, they come up, pick it up, go back and
Yes, ma'am.
Sit wherever they're going to sit or stand wherever they're going to stand. Yeah. And we've got three different areas like this with one somewhere close to each container.
Yes, ma'am. And the, the goal there is to have kind of three options to eat from when you go there. Cause if you're like my family, when you say, where do you want to go eat? Everybody wants to go different places. So you'll have more than one choice here on this site.
Didn't used to be like that.
I know.
Life was so much simpler.
I agree.
So like this area that we're looking at right here, is that where people would go and sit to eat?
Yes, ma'am. They could sit there or they could go back up to the house on the deck or inside.
And what would be the capacity of each one of those?
I think there's about 60 seats under the tree, about 40 plus or minus inside. And then the remainder on the deck up to whatever the 195 is total. I wish we had a top-down. I wish we had a top down. Yeah, there's, yeah, 100 seats plus or minus on the deck, something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I think I read somewhere in the packet that there would be sort of rotating chefs coming through the outdoor pavilion, the outdoor kitchen and sort of have different cuisine come through. And it would be sort of a gathering place for people to go and try new things. Is that, is that correct?
I'll let John speak to that. Not, well, it's not rotating as in like every week or every month. I mean, we're going to sign lease agreements, but those lease agreements might be like five years. And then at that point, but yes, the idea is to bring more chef curated food. You know, so it's not like Applebee's that stays for 30 years, right? So we want to bring in new talent.
Right, something a little more interesting. So I support this project, you know, and I really think that, you know, with the removal of the stage or at least, I mean, in my view, turning the stage to face Main Street, this project should move forward. I think that this is not probably the exact best fit as far as this parcel goes. But you know, there really isn't a lot of food restaurant options down that way. There's Sonic and that's about it.
Our, if I can speak to it, our motive, why, because I've been looking at this property for two years. And I hear the concern, but the stamp family has reached out to us with immense thanks. You know, from our, from my perspective as like a restaurateur, it's like we didn't want to put something that we felt was this maybe creative or out of the box in a strip mall. We also felt that that didn't fit. And there's not a lot of options for us to go, but we know that this, you know, the city is exploding and the density is getting more, right? So we felt like we were doing the honoring thing by like not tearing down the house. We want to keep the rock wall. We intentionally chose this on purpose. So granted, we want to be good neighbors. But if, you know, again, motive, it's like we want to go in and just, you know, I don't want a car wash to knock that place down, right? I live down the street. So it's like, you know, let's at least kind of revive it. And then the stamps reach out to us and like, thank you, you know. So anyway, that's where we're at.
There's been a little formal talk as we're kind of gone through this and had a vetting. And I'll kind of remind folks, this is approved use on this. But I wanted to give the commission an opportunity to kind of just talk through everything. This is something new and something unique from Hendersonville. But what I would ask, would you be willing to formally put in to request that staff remove the stage on that as part of the approval?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, again, it was an added benefit of being there, but if it's not working for everybody, sure.
Thank you. Any other question? Commissioner Hardwick?
No, I'm just going to make a motion.
Oh, okay. You're getting ahead of me there. So I was going to entertain a motion that, that we'll let you do this.
I'm entertaining a motion that we accept it with all staff comments and that the stage.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Berry, would you call the roll please?
Altizer?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
All right, that's seven and two, it passes.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Rhythm Chrysler Deep Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealership. Their site plan. Kick this to Timothy and Keith, tell us a little bit about what we're going to be addressing.
Now, this will be an 18.6 acre, it is 18.6 acre site. That's west of Center Point Liquors, stretches west to the western boundary of the city along Mansker Creek. It is owned general commercial currently. So a new car dealership isn't allowed use by right. This will be the site for Rhythm Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. It will consist of a 54,767 square foot building and 1,106 parking spaces. They are requesting free waivers. Those are outlined in your staff report, starting on page three. And myself and Keith, the applicant will be happy to address any questions you might have. They have agreed to all staff comments.
Will the applicant step forward, just in case anybody has any questions, please? Or do you have anything that you want to add before we get to questions or anything?
We're excited to be part of the community. We understand this is kind of the new gateway to the city. I think we've worked with staff so far, Keith and Timothy, on there's some things asked of us. An ornamental fence across the frontage on Main Street. And I believe a Hendersonville sign up front. So I think we've been working with staff on that front and just excited for this project.
Mr. Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Can someone talk me through the ingress and egress for this facility? Again, it's not really shown in our packet here on paper, but in some of the other plans that I saw, it appears that there's a way to come out the back onto Center Point Road. Is that, is that correct? Like you don't just have to turn off of Main Street 31 East to get in and out. Is that, am I, did I see that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the egress points, you know, we're going to, you know, you can come in off of Main Street, but then go out, per the traffic study, it's going to be difficult to turn left back toward River Gate. So we are going to stripe out an island to basically tell people and signage to turn left. You know, no left turn, right only. We're also trying to encourage customers to exit out the back towards Center Point.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are two things that car dealerships almost invariably do almost every time. And if you go from Mansker Creek toward Nashville, you can see it from there on. First of all, it's a great dealership. I love it, I'm glad you're coming. But please, explain to me that you will be able to pull your transports off the main road and out of the center lane, the left turn lane, and that you won't be on the shoulder of the road on public property. I know people that drive transports and the poor guys get there and they've got nowhere to unload. So they're at risk for getting a ticket for being out in the road, not to mention standing beside their eight foot transport in an eight foot lane in oncoming traffic. So please explain that you're not going to do that. The second thing, and it'll be the same deal. The other thing that they do, and drive down there, you'll see, they pull right up to the right of way of the highway on Tennessee state property to merchandise cars. I don't believe you're going to be able to do that, but if there's a grass strip out in front, a four wheel drive pickup will get out there. And I've seen that every time I drive down through there. I don't believe it's appropriate to use state property to merchandise your product. So please assure me that that's not going to happen.
That's, we've thought about this site plan in depth. Board just helped us out. We have, towards the back of the dealership, there's a wide open area for transfer trucks and haulers to unload and load. That's a problem that we deal with in existing facilities and we definitely wanted to take care of that here. And I hear your concern about cars parking on the right of way. Our intent is not to have that. We have a couple of display pads up on Main Street. And we are also planning kind of a little rock formation, but that will be on our property, not on any right of way.
And just as a follow up, you'll see at each of these dealerships when they were built, they had those turnarounds also where the semis could come in and get out. But y'all know as well as I do that the more inventory you've got, the more selection you've got, the easier it is to sell a car when somebody comes in. So what most everybody does, they park all over the turnarounds and the semi still can't get in. So please assure me that you're not going to do that.
We can assure you that we've, that was one of the main concerns with this site plan is the area behind the dealership and making sure we have enough access back there. So that was taken into account and, you know, every, we have every intention of doing that.
Mr. Slattery?
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, just want to talk a little bit about waiver number two. I'll just be real transparent. I am not a fan of garage doors of any kind facing Main Street and seven of them. Because, and I'll say that they look great in these drawings, but I would imagine they'll rarely be closed during operating hours. So is there no other option to place them from the side?
So the service drive shown here on the left, those three overhead doors, those are actually high speed doors, so they automatically go up and down.
Okay.
I think it's in three seconds, something like that.
Chop anybody in half.
They do have sensors and everything to make sure they don't come down on cars or people. But they are full vision, full glass. And, you know, those will be closed during business hours. So it's going to be conditioned space inside, really trying to improve the customer experience there.
Okay. So what's happening in that end of the building behind those three rapidly moving doors?
In on the left hand side. So in the service drive, that's where the customer will drive in.
Oh, that's just where you receive?
Correct. Just where we receive, the customer will drop off their car. They'll be greeted by an advisor. And after that, the car will be taken out back to the shop. But in this, there's not going to be any work done.
Okay.
On the right hand side, those are actually accessory bays. And what we tried to do there is mimic as close as we could to store front doors. So we have the anodized aluminum frame and full glass. No heavy work will be done in those bays. This is really for you buy a new truck or a new Jeep and you want to put some accessories, rims, things like that. That's what will be done in these front bays. All work, major work will be done in the shop out back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I want to follow up on the bay doors and that was one of the questions I had. Would you be able to put some vegetation up to kind of hide the doors from Main Street?
Not sure what the landscaping looks like out on front of Main Street. But we do have, you know, a lot of that will be shaded really by cars. You know, you see how much parking we have in front of those. Obviously, you'll be able to see the top half of those doors, but I do think a lot of these cars will block overall those doors.
Okay. And is it possible to put the doors in the back?
We do have doors on the backside of the building. However, those are, you know, that's for actual work being done. If staff and the board really has an issue with those overhead doors facing the street, you know, this is really what we're trying to display our retail and show that we do do accessories and things of that nature. But if there's a real problem with that, I'm sure we can discuss and come up with another solution.
Okay. Well, as a owner of three Jeeps, we're excited that you're moving to Hendersonville. And Timothy, I've got an environmental question for you. Mansker Creek floods a lot. Is there any issues with this property going underwater? After a heavy rain or prolonged rain?
Sarah Locke would be the best person to answer that question.
So this site, this site, no, not at this time. Previously, it was in the flood plain and they did have those issues. But actually this last year, they went through a process with, not them specifically, but, excuse me, the owners, previous owners, I guess, went through the process of with FEMA doing a letter of map revision. And they filled the site to meet FEMA's requirements and that this entire site has been removed from the flood plain.
Okay, good. That's reassuring. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just to talk a second about waiver number one. The increased outdoor lot lighting beyond the maximum 10 foot candle lighting on the site. And, you know, I just kind of had a little aside over here with Keith and he's reassured me that actually is going to result in better lighting for the car lot, which I am always a fan of more lighting at night. So I would firmly support that waiver one.
We did have some conversation with Keith and Timothy. And with this being the new gateway to the city, if you will, we kind of did want to brighten up the area and we're really excited about turning this area into something substantial that you guys would like.
Mr. Longmire?
Yes, let's talk about waiver three. Your material other than brick or stone?
Yes, ma'am.
Talk about it.
We're trying to juggle a lot of things here. The motor companies have a certain image that they like to see.
We do too.
I understand that. And I think we've come a long way from our initial submittal. I think we've really tried to incorporate brick on both the service drive side, the accessory base side, and on both sides of the rhythm entry tower. We also tried to do a different color brick on the lower, if the water table, if you will. I think it was two feet tall. So kind of a darker and lighter color in contrast. And we tried to incorporate kind of what the motor company would like to see as well as, you know, the fabric of Hendersonville, if you will. So we tried to kind of juggle those two.
So what you're doing is asking for a reduction?
Yes, ma'am. In just the brick and stone. We still incorporated it into the overall plan, just, I wouldn't say it was the primary material on the front elevation.
So Timothy, right now, it should be what percentage?
Well, I think like Keith had explained, you know, primary, we're looking for at least greater than 50% for, you know, to be brick or stone or artificial stone. So secondary, secondary would be something, you know, below that.
Keith, maybe you can help me understand why is it we always get this?
The developer can maybe speak more to it. I think, you know, a lot of times it's just, everybody's aware of what our requirements are. And if you deviate from that, you're going to have to ask for a waiver. So everybody understands, you know, our expectation out of the gate is that your building be primarily brick or stone and be a very interesting looking building as well. And if you're going to ask for a waiver, it has to be, has to be a very significantly interesting building. I think.
What makes this one particularly interesting?
Yeah, I'll leave that to the developer and their architect to maybe answer that question. I mean, it's certainly, I will, I will note as they had said, where this started from originally, probably what, six months ago when we started talking about this? What you see today is totally different than what it initially started out with.
It's also totally different from what our requirement is.
That's correct, that's correct.
So, you know.
Yeah. But I would have to let the developer defend, defend the need for the waiver. There is interest in the building as far as the articulation, the variety of materials. There is an interest in that versus just a solid, a solid wall building. There was 100% brick.
And I will add to that, that, you know, we do use a variety of materials here. I know at first, when we initially talked to staff, they weren't so keen on the Jeep branding. So that's on the left hand side, it kind of has an orange tint to it. But we kind of limited that here. You know, we incorporate the use of ACM, which is an aluminum composite material. That's really what the motor companies like to see and we've greatly decreased that from where they wanted to see it. So like I said, we're really trying to juggle here what your expectation is and kind of what the motor company is demanding of the owner. So I understand that's kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. But I think we've been, we've tried to work on that and I think we've come a long way. I understand there's still some concern.
I'm just not really big on waivers. If we have to keep giving a lot of waivers, we need to look at what our requirement is. And we're always having people come in with reasons why their way of looking at it is better than the way that the rule says it should be. You don't have anything in here that matches the requirement of 50%.
Of brick? No, ma'am.
I mean, we've got 3%, 33%, 44%, and 6%. So you're... I just want, just tell me.
I don't, I don't know if I understand the...
Well, it says here, "The applicant is requesting that the exterior of the proposed building to allow the following brick percentages. On the south, 3%, on the east, 33%, on the north, 44%, and on the west, 6%."
Yes, ma'am.
So you have nothing anywhere that has met our requirement of 50% brick or stone.
I understand. Uh, and that's kind of going back to the fact that we're really trying to juggle multiple expectations. And, uh, you know, our understanding at first was Main Street and Center Point are the main facades that were of concern. We didn't have any brick on the service drive to begin with, and now the full service drive is complete brick. So, uh, I understand that the percentage doesn't, you know, is not 50%. But I think we've made conscious decisions in the areas that we did add the brick to try to add some character to the building.
It can be brick or stone, doesn't have to be brick.
Yes, ma'am.
Timothy, I want to go back to something, the comments you made a moment ago when we were kind of talking about this. Um, you said that you'd like to see 50% on the front, and then just for secondary, besides somewhat less. How much somewhat less do you like to see on that?
I'm sorry, I, um, what I meant to say was, um, secondary materials would be, materials other than brick, stone, artificial stone, there should be secondary, i.e. less than 50%.
Okay, okay. I may have misheard you.
That's fine. That's my mistake. Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have one, two quick questions. Is this facility larger than the current location that you have?
Yes, sir.
And will you be increasing your sales staff or employees when you move?
Will have to for a building this size. I think it's, uh, I think the old facility is roughly 30,000 square feet, I believe. So, uh, yes, we will have to, to staff up specifically in the shop with technicians.
So you, um, do you know how many total employees you will need to have?
I do not at this time.
But you will be adding new employees?
Yes, sir.
And what is your current sales volume?
I cannot answer that.
Do you know how many units you sell every year?
I do not know that.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Sorry about coming up here again, but I want to know, who came up with the idea of mimicking the fence across the road? Who's idea was that? Anybody take credit for that?
Yeah, that's mine. Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes, that's mine.
That's a wonderful idea. That's a fantastic idea. That creates an entryway into Hendersonville from the south, well, from that side, from the Mansker Creek side. It looks really good. And congratulations also. Anybody that's been in construction knows that there's very few places where you can get rid of, uh, construction fill and that particular site. Congratulations on making a valuable piece of property and at the same time providing the ability to all of our other developers and people in the construction business to take a piece of their ground to make your ground. It's great. It's wonderful. It's up there like it should be now, and it's above the floodplain, and I think it's going to be a great addition. Uh, congratulations on doing that.
I do appreciate that. Now, I will add on some of the comments about the brick or stone so that fence does incorporate some more stone. I know it's not on the building facade, but it'll be what you see from Main Street.
Yeah, that, uh, that is something where that wasn't necessarily a requirement. That's something that, that, uh, that we suggested that they do to try to offset some of this with not having as much brick on the building. So that was one of those things. One thing, though, that I do might want to mention that I didn't catch in the staff comments is probably maybe adding one more column in that long expanse.
Okay.
Uh, right here on the left, if that would be okay to do as well.
I don't think that should be an issue.
Okay. And there isn't a, I don't believe, there's not a city limit sign, right Timothy, that's included that I'm aware of?
That was my misunderstanding, man. I thought it was a...
We'd be happy to consider that, but I don't think that's in there. So, thank you.
So seeing no more commissioners with questions or comments, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments with the addition of the one more fence post that was just described, column, thank you, that was just described on that. Absolutely.
Sorry, and I was remiss in one comment through staff comments as well. Um, I just wanted to make sure if you haven't already to initiate the process with T-Dot for your driveway permit. They'll need to approve all of those improvements, so that was, that's all.
Sir, do you want us to add that as a staff comment, or you just wanted to make sure that they knew that?
Uh, I think it was good just to...
Okay, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments and the additional column on the fencing.
Do I make the motion to approve the project with all staff comments and with the waivers that have been presented and the call?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. In two seconds, I'm going to ask Mr. Barry to call the roll.
Altizer?
Aye.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Aye.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
And Coker?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you for your time.
We have one more site plan on the agenda here this evening. This one is Timothy's, so... And actually now see the note that the applicant requests deferral, so I think we'll grant that, so that'll be simple enough. Moving on then to staff level projects that have been approved. Keith, will you kind of give us a rundown of these, please?
Yes, I will. One second. Okay. Staff level projects that have been approved this last month. Digestive Liver and Health Specialist Exterior Remodel. Uh, Glen Oak Shopping Center Resub of Lot 1, Final Platte. Hazel Path Commons, Pergola Edition Site Plan. Safari Car Wash, Awning Edition Site Plan. They've made quite a few improvements over there. This is an additional awning that they're putting on there. Uh, staff level projects that are pending. Uh, Caldwell Estates, Lots 11, 13, Consolidation, Revision 1, Final Platte. Dobson Triplex, Site Plan Amendment, Phasing. The Greg Property, Final Platte. Hendersonville Freewill Baptist Church Edition Site Plan. Indian Lake Village, Phase 3E, 31B. This is for Texas Roadhouse. It's a final development plan exhibit. Uh, the Maples Commercial Property, Lot 1, that's where Prime Car Wash is for their final platte. And we're getting that connection for that shared access easement over to the old Jack in the Box with this as well. Maple Grove Boulevard, Lots 18 and 19, Consolidation, Final Platte. Martin's Barbecue, it is coming. Uh, addition and parking lot revision site plan, uh, so that's moving through the process, not approved yet. Millstone, Phases 1 through 12, Final Development Plan. Union University Outdoor Pavilion, Site Plan. Savannah, Phase 1, Lots 237 and 238, Consolidation, Final Platte. And the Take Five Oil Change is looking to revise their access drive with the site plan. Those are all those items, Mr. Chairman.
I just have one question. Can you catch me back up to speed on where Texas Roadhouse is? I remember that we dealt with them several months ago, but I've got young kids and it's...
Yeah.
My brain doesn't remember everything that we've dealt with.
Yeah. Uh, Texas Roadhouse will be relocating from their Glenbrook location to in front, near Sam's Wholesale. And that vacant property that's right there when you come off of Exit 7 onto Indian Lake Boulevard. Uh, it'll be right, right there in that, in that area. Also, next to it possibly in the future might be another hotel that'll be to the left of it. Uh, but that's where that location is going to be. And this is just kind of squaring away the plats and things they've got to do to get the land ready.
Is that right next to Jonathan's?
Yeah, it's right across the street from Jonathan's.
Drive down beside Jonathan's.
Yes. And this, uh, this will have some, I think it'll have a few more parking spaces. And the layout will be a little bit better on the parking than the current site is as well. Yes, this is one, I think they got a few waivers for some of that. And actually, it worked out, they came up with those revisions, and I guess that's what we're looking at. Uh, no, we already did that. They made the revisions on that. Remember when you did the waiver? And it actually turned out pretty good on that entry where it's greened it up quite a bit more where the, uh, the accessible spaces were. So it actually turned out, turned out pretty good, given that waiver.
Any other comments from Director?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll just share a few comments. One of the things is this evening, effective today, we're no longer the Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission. Uh, we're the Hendersonville Planning Commission. We're a municipal planning organization now. Uh, so the state approved that last week, so that is effective. You can, you see Mr. Hardcastle isn't with us this evening. And so now we're nine members on the planning commission. We will, at next month's meeting, I'll have, and we'll do all the proper notices. Uh, we'll have the bylaws so that we can amend the bylaws to reflect these changes. Uh, also, one other thing, uh, I think it was last month, we had the work session. It was a very good work session. Appreciate everybody's time to spend on that. Staff is working with, um, on codifying all those changes that we talked about, plus a couple of other additional things. Our hope is that in May, uh, we'll have the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. And we'll start that, start that process. Also, one other thing that we kind of talked about a little bit at the work session that will start next month with, as far as the staff. What we'll do is, we don't necessarily recommend, uh, projects for approval, but one of the things on some site plans that meet all requirements and aren't requesting any waiver, uh, there'll be items that we'll actually, um, put in a staff report that the staff is recommending approval and everything is in order. And we'll put those on the consent agenda. Uh, and then when we do that, if we have something on there, it's still going to have a staff report and everything. If anybody wanted to pull it off to discuss it, you know, it could come off of the consent agenda. And I think that'll, that kind of helps some things on, some of the things that are a little bit more low, lower level that, you know, are clearly things on site plans that really need to be voted yes on and kind of get that clarified. But the only way it'll go on the consent agenda is the following things. It meets all of the requirements. There are no waivers requested. And in addition to that, uh, the planning staff is comfortable with it. If it doesn't meet any of those three things, uh, then it will not be on the consent agenda. And I think by doing that, then also it will hopefully, um, on some of these waivers that we get, especially where we just get one small waiver, uh, then it'll have an opportunity for, uh, applicants to, if they can just go ahead and fix that waiver and not have a waiver and everything else is in order and we're comfortable with it, they could potentially get it on the consent agenda and actually get a recommendation from, from planning staff. So we're going to try that, and we'll just try that for a couple of months, see, see how that works. Uh, and we've had consent agenda in the past, but not in this kind of way. It was just, things would go on the consent agenda, on a large agenda, uh, just so there were fewer things that we had to discuss. Also, let me think of one other thing here. I think that's, yeah, I think that's, I think that's everything that we have. As far as the volume of what's going on, you know, last month I reported we have a lot of activity going on uh, in January, and we had even more activity going on in February. So the total of single-family building permits was a record high, 41 in January, it's 44 in February. So when you hear that number, then that's a lot of activity going on in our building codes department. And then that's also a lot of activity and permitting that's going on in our, um, in our planning department as well. So, and I can answer any questions that anybody had as well, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment. I know I'm doing a lot of that tonight, but we seem to be doing a lot of waivers. Uh, I hate to keep referring back to the Hobby Lobby project, but we talked about waivers for, or not waivers necessarily, but parking requirements, uh, for that project. We talked about a lot of metal that people are using tonight instead of bricks. We're talking about quick brick, which as far as I'm concerned is wearing your COVID mask down on your throat. It's, makes the appearance of bricks, but it really isn't brick. So I don't know what we're doing except doctoring up what we're trying to accomplish. I don't know necessarily why we don't like metal. Maybe that's something that y'all could help me understand. Uh, but if we're approving more metal and less bricks, then maybe we should look at our regulations. Much like maybe we should look at our parking regulations if ours are so much different than metros, for example. But maybe that's some work session stuff that we could talk about and, or at least give me a call and explain it to me. Maybe I just need a little more information here.
And it is, it is challenging and, you know, we have these pre-development meetings and Costco. Um, all the applicants tonight, we've had multiple meetings with them over several months and expressed to them, hey, this is what the requirement is, and they all understand what the requirement is. And, you know, each, some of them, you know, feel very strongly that they really need a waiver for, you know, for whatever reason. I think it's a real challenge to, if we just got rid of a lot of our requirements, especially with brick and some of those different things, we have less waivers, but I think we would just end up with real blocky-looking buildings that were very boring. And then what this does is by having this primary material being brick or stone, then it's forcing it that, you know what, if you, uh, if you don't give us something that's creative in place of what we're asking for, uh, then it gives more leverage for the planning commission.
Well, you have a negotiation lever to use when you have a higher brick content that you've got to negotiate back. You can get something else. I get that. But if we keep giving waivers, I'm stickler for rules. Every time you change the rules for one person, the next person expects it. And I just think we're getting ourselves into a box here with some of that.
And one of the things, and me and the staff have been meeting on this as we're talking about these changes to the zoning ordinance, and we're looking at waivers and maybe looking at trying to define those a little bit different. You know, where maybe it's not necessarily, and it's not just a semantic thing, but it's not really a waiver. It's here's the different ways you can meet this objective. Which one are you picking and are you executing it properly? So that's, that's one of the things that we're, that we're looking, looking to do. But, you know, when we have a site plan and, you know, the exterior on the design review, if it is not meeting, and we make this very clear to the applicants, if it's not meeting the expectation and you're not willing to bend to meet the expectation and you demand a waiver, uh, then you very well could justifiably get turned down for your site plan because you're not meeting design review. If you meet all the design review and you're not asking for any waivers and it's a site plan, then typically you should vote yes for that, you know, unless there is a specific reason for, you know, to do that. Because a site plan isn't rezoning or a plan development, it's pretty clear, clear these are what the requirements are and you've got to meet those. And then, you know, and we've had instances where we've had developments, simple developments that meet all the requirements, but they're not that spectacular. But they didn't need a variance and they didn't need a waiver. They met, they met all of the very minimum standards, but they just weren't very, you know, they didn't really look like they met the bar of what we kind of, kind of expect. But I think we need to, we need to make sure to maintain that high-level bar. Uh, because once we let that go down, even for the lack of just we don't want to do a waiver, then there it goes. I mean, you know, one goes, here goes another one, then we approve it. And it's not really about whether we approve the waivers or not, it's the totality of what we're looking at. And if at the end of what we're approving, if yeah, that's, that's a good-looking project and it's a good-looking project that will stand the test of time, then that's okay, even if it needed six waivers. That's okay. Uh, but, uh, but a very lowering our standards to where nothing needs a waiver and anything goes, uh, that would be, that would be a detriment. And it would be not just a detriment to the trust of our community, but it would be a detriment to all these people we've held this high standard to. And they've paid out money to do this extra stuff because that's the Hendersonville way. We want it to look good. And it's important for even those people, the developers and the people that have went... the people that have, went through the planning commission, and we've held them to that very high standard. You know, their value is held up that we had them put in there, as long as we make everybody hold up to that standard as well. So that kind of helps. But I, I totally understand what you're talking about there, Commissioner.
I appreciate that. And I do understand the leverage part of it. And I see where you're going. Just, we have to discuss the waivers. It looks like we're, while we give, we like you so much, we want you down.
Right.
Making the last guy we would do that with. So it looks a little bit unfair, but I see that.
The building design, the building design standards in particular, that, that's a design review process, which is different from stuff like, you have to have one parking space per 100 square feet. It's, design review, you're expected to have, you're going to have waivers, because that's, that's a lot more squishy than stuff like parking standards or, like building setbacks. That's where you need a variance. That's something where it's hard requirement, you got to give the BZA to get that. But building design standards, design review, it's to be expected that you're going to get those requests. That's just part of having those design review requirements.
And next month's meeting will be, we'll, we'll have multiple new coffee places on next month's agenda. So drive-through coffee places. So, get ready.
All right. Any other questions or comments, or hearing none? I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. I heard three motions to adjourn, so we'll take them all and take second and third. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Not going to entertain any opposition, so thank you all very much.